Thank you all for coming today. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Weston County Health Services Board of Trustees to order. I don't know who to ask if we have a quorum, but I think you will.
Do you have a quorum?
Okay. Election of, the next on the agenda is election of a meeting chair. With the board's assent, I would like to volunteer to be the temporary meeting chair until after the election of officers. All in, is there any other?
Let me, let me add something.
Yeah, I move that Carrie, that Carrie Droste temporary, temporary, temporary chair until the election of officers.
I'm sorry to interrupt, make sure you speak up because we just have speakers around the room, microphones, talk as much as you can.
Thank you. All in favor of Carrie Droste as the temporary chair for the election of officers?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your temporary confidence. Next on the agenda is the pledge allegiance.
Would you lead us in the flag?
I got a phone with a flag on it? You want me to fold this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
While we wait for the flag, Pastor Ben Roberts, would you lead us in prayer?
Amen. Lord Jesus, we thank you for what is this beautiful day. We thank you for this community we live in. Lord, we also thank you for all the many blessings for God, the miracles that we see every day, every moment of our day. And Lord, we thank you for the blessed work you see from what is this hospital. Lord, I personally thank you for this facility that's helped me, that's helped my life. And Lord, I thank you for my friends who have been treated here at times spared through death. And Lord, I thank you for the staff, the caretakers, all the members of this organization which have been called to serve you in these positions. Lord Jesus, I also want to thank you for these board members who are present, those who volunteered their precious time and were placed by you in that position. Lord, this evening, this new group begins and this hospital is my prayer, likely also the prayer of all of this county, all of this community, which you give them strength, which provide courage in facing issues. Lord, please give them your wisdom to understand, provide them your guiding and direction. Lord, help all the board members present, along with the staff, all the righteous members, be with them in the decisions they make. Have these decisions not be for self, not be for personal good, but their decisions and plans be that which glorifies you, serves you, serving you through efficient, honest business, allowing you to provide a general loving and professional care that you need and deserve. In your holy name, my Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Pastor Ben.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the election of officers. We will start with nominations for chairman, and after we elect a new chairman for the board, then the new chairman will take over the meeting and handle the elections for secretary and treasurer. Does anyone have any rules or guidelines they'd like to present or discuss?
For those that are nominated, we'll vote.
Yes.
Want to clarify?
Okay, so seeing no questions, do we have any nominations for chair?
I was gonna nominate Ann, and the reason why I'm gonna nominate Ann is I've worked with Ann for two years now. I've always been able to access Ann, she's very accessible. Ann is kind of like a glue for, for a lot of people. I feel like in my conversations with every board member, everybody was, was, seemed okay with that, at least that willing to work together. I think Ann understands the relationship between CEO and, and the chair, which is a partnership. So that's why I nominated her.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any further nominations for chair? Any further nominations for chair?
I just, I want to say something real quick. I don't, I don't think that I am the smartest one in this room. I'm not sure I'm the best leader, but what I want more than anything is I want us to work as a team, and I want all of us to be able to, to agree, and I want all of us to disagree and still be able to come and, and, and make our votes and get the best. I want, I want to get the best of all seven of us, and I think that's how we'll come to the best decision.
Agreed.
I move nominations cease.
Carrie, do we have a second on the motion to cease nominations?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. I don't, no discussion on that, right? Is there discussion?
No, not necessarily on that, but there was a couple of maybe.
Okay. All in favor of Ann Slakel as our new chair?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations, Pastor Ben.
Oh, yours, it's all mine. So, okay, so the next order of business, thank you guys, right away, all of you, thank you. I will, I will do my best to help us. So, on to secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary?
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate Nick.
I'll second her. Any other nominations? All, any discussions? Okay, all those in favors of Nick being secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now treasurer. Do we have any nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Carrie.
I will second. Have any other nominations? Okay, all those, or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Carrie as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. So, well, now the work begins. Okay, so are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a few. The first being item, I'm not good with Roman numerals, 10, 15, 17. Executive session, can we move that up before adjournment?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we all in good with that?
I think we have to be.
Yeah, it has to be part of the meeting, I think.
Yeah. And where, where would you like to move it to?
Just move it up, so move adjournment down to the end.
Yes.
Yep, swap, swap them out. And then I had two additional changes. Probably under new business, could we add the packaging machine for long-term care?
That was.
And, two discussion, actually three discussion items. One being bylaws, and in bylaws, the meeting time, we can discuss that. The next being advertising, and the next being board communication.
And where do you want to put that?
Can we put them, all of them under new business? We can just add them under privacy coach, is that fair?
Does anybody else see a better spot for it? And, anything else? Yes.
Madam Chair, I would like to include in probably some place your agenda. It is about any type of session.
Yeah. Would you see a good spot for that?
I would, under work communication. That'd be fine.
Okay.
Work communication.
What did you call it?
Executive session. Minutes, discussion about.
Just thinking about this, Ted, did you get your answer this far?
I, no, I guess I did.
We should ask.
Okay.
So, one of the things I added was advertisements.
Now that's fine.
Um, anything else we see for agenda? I, I think we don't have this on the agenda. We need to talk about what committees we're gonna be on. I'm not sure whether we just do that right now, or we wait till?
The bylaws say that at this point, the chair is,
So we should just do that right now? Okay, so committees. Yes, we need to take care of that. Okay, is there anything else as far as adding to the, adding or subtracting from the agenda?
I will not add this to the board of directors.
Okay, and where, where should I?
That's C, I think that's C. C, under new business.
Personal communication. Do you just want to do it as personal communication?
No, under new business.
Oh, okay, there we go. Yep, okay. Under.
No, that's private, that's code.
Yeah, that's not.
Oh, that's just.
Okay, sorry, it is not that same one. I thought it was. Let's, let's, let's put this on new business, and we'll just put it, how about we just, we'll just add it to the end, we'll talk about it after the executive session minutes, I'll pull this in. Okay, so I don't remember, did we have a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
No.
Okay, so we need that, so we need somebody to, so. Carrie, who did?
I will second.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Okay, so now, if we're gonna figure out, oh, we have to go. Thank you. Okay, everybody who accepts the agenda as changed, I would like to say aye.
Aye.
Oh, all good? Any notes? Okay, so now, I, we're gonna figure out committees. I want to hear everybody's, Nathan, do you have, or I hear that you seem to know all bylaws quite well. Okay, you've got it too. Okay, so we need, we need to figure out, I, I want to hear from each person which, one, what they think their strengths are, and also what, if they have a committee they would like to be a part of. So, Nick, we, do you, are you up to starting?
Yeah, sure. So I've been serving on the quality committee for the last two years. I feel like, you know, I've been learning quite a bit, I've learned quite a lot. I'd like to continue with that, just because I feel like I'm starting to build a rapport with everything in there. So, if possible, and that, that's where I would like to stay if, if there was such a justice.
What about you, Mary? Do you have, well, actually, before we start with the new ones, somebody, rather bylaws, Nathan, tell us what the options are.
Well, you're starting with quality committee, you have three trustees on that.
Certainly, you have three on them, yes.
We have the bylaws, so that's three, consists of three bylaws, of course administrator, quality director, chief operator, but three trustees.
Three trustees, yeah.
Looking for, I would say, on that.
Okay, and then, and then the finance committee?
Finance committee.
How many on that?
The finance committee, you're looking for, the treasurer is going to be on that, at least two other trustees.
Okay, one plus two, okay.
The joint conference committee, you are looking for, medical staff committee, closing two members of the board of trustees. And one rotating member of the board of trustees.
Two, two steady plus one rotating, so we probably just are gonna need to take turns. Okay, and then, the governance committee?
Governance committee. President, secretary, and additional trustee, so actually three, but two of them got it, president and the secretary.
Madam Chair, I have a comment about governance. Since governance has been nothing but a problem for this board in the past, and since this new board is going to be discussing bylaw changes, I personally would like to make a motion at some point to strike 99.9% of the governance committee, if not the whole entire thing. So my suggestion would be maybe not, not appointing any members to governance committee until this new full board has a bit of time to go through the bylaws and discuss the changes we might want to make, and see if we even want to, as a board, continue the governance committee. It's just a suggestion. I would love to hear how the rest of the board feels about that.
Madam Chair, I, what you're saying makes a lot of sense. If the board may want to change that, these are our current bylaws. And they're written and stoned until they're, they're changed, so I would not intend to disagree with what you're saying, doesn't make sense. But I, I think that we ought to follow the steps. We may not have time looking at this agenda to discuss bylaws and deaths, to want to go ahead and make those changes. For matters.
Fair enough. What's everybody else's opinion?
Well, we need to establish a governance committee in the, for now, then, is that something?
Well, that's what Ted is saying.
Right, so that's what you're alluding to, Ted, so. So how do we do this in a way that doesn't create kind of the tension that it did before? Because we all know the governance board was created for the purpose of kind of getting everybody prepared for meetings, that was the intent, right? And somewhere along the way, that got either, either, I guess, everybody has different opinions about that. But the reality is, so how do we do this in a way where we get everybody to trust that board? I don't know how we do that, that, the governance committee, but I think, it's not in the bylaws that states that it has to be the officers, correct?
Yeah, it does say.
So it does. So that would be us. So that, okay, so there is, so that would have to be us, and that's, right, so we're all happening on.
So we might as well just.
It was. It says that, and an additional trustee, not that several trustees could be put on that.
So, question becomes a quorum. Yeah, yeah, and that's where we're, so does that mean we rotate maybe two, two officers, and then somebody steps in and sits in, or how does that work?
Ted's point is a fair one, in that if the, the bylaws say we should do it, we should do it. It doesn't say it has to be, doesn't say that governance committee has to be, right?
But the government.
Then talk about it.
The governance committee does review and amend the board of trustees' bylaws. So that's where a bylaw change should start, and their, their recommendation to be brought back to the board at that time.
So.
I don't think there would be anything that would prevent people from coming together, because the bylaws first, the bylaws are the first page. It says any proposed changes have to be presented to the entire board required to that meeting. And so I see no problem solving governance. Carrie, we could add it to each and all.
I have a suggestion. So how about we do the exact opposite of my last suggestion, and make the governance board the entire sitting board? Both of those are what the bylaws say. It says.
And a additional trustee.
Yeah.
And additional trustee. I don't know that that is limited to just one. Depends on how you want to read that, I suppose.
I think we're going to discuss bylaws, changes, we're all gonna want to be in the discussion, so we might as well just have it.
I have a lot of ideas from bylaws, so if you need to stick one more person on there.
Okay, well, we don't have to, so, okay, so this, I believe these are all meetings, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Foundation.
Oh, foundation.
And ethics, do you get ethics?
Foundation, ethics, good job.
So, foundation is one, our foundation is one, I believe.
And ethics is two. They're under the special.
Yeah, they're not.
They're not, they're not.
Bimonthly, it can.
Okay, because it's not specified in.
It does specify special, but.
Yeah. So, let's, same. If everybody is in agreement, we've got everything written, now we'll go through and we'll, so Nick already said he is interested in quality. Yeah, quality, governance. Oh, sorry, yes, Nathan said governance, Nick said quality. Yes, yep, okay, and Mary, do you have, what's, do you, can, and I always feel bad about this. We're having to say what you prefer on your first meeting. Oh, ethics meets once every quarter, rather than once every month. Kareem, what do you?
I think I would be most interested in the foundation, and potentially maybe to be like one of the rotating, or, or on the joint conference.
Okay. Okay, Carrie.
I, my, my time's up.
Just tell us what you want.
Well, I, yeah, I'm an automatic on finance, and I would really love to work with Nathan on finance. And I think our two nurses would be wonderful on quality.
Okay, Ted, what, what are you interested in?
Knowing a lot about these committees, it's a little hard to pick and choose.
Yeah, I'll just skip over you, well, Nathan said he's interested in governance and what else?
Governance, finance, joint commission.
Okay, whoa, 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 whoa.
I've had a long time to think.
Okay, so.
So I can repeat that, so I think we say governance first, and then finance, and then the joint commission.
Okay, Ted, now you're next.
My part.
Government?
Sure.
Anything else that you're interested in? Anything else?
Finance.
Finance. Okay, so, let's see, Nick, the quality seems easiest to me, Nick, Mary, and Kareem, so that sounds.
Did you guys agree to that?
Or, so Mary. Should be on quality, are you happy to be on quality? I might have nurses on quality.
That's fine.
So one of the things, it meets at 8:00 AM.
Can you speak up a little bit?
So it meets at 8:00 AM every Wednesday of the board meeting, so we met yesterday. So the first Wed, the third Wednesday of each month. So that, that, that is something to consider too when going on, with what you have availability.
And, and is there, does anybody have a plans on byla, like, is that something to change in the bylaws? That it's not meeting at that time, it's not in the bylaws.
It's not, not.
Something to change. I would say that many chairmen likes.
Right.
So, so, I own that meeting.
Yes.
Change that anytime.
Okay.
We can figure out a time that works for everybody, and we can make it work for.
Okay.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be the third Wednesday at eight, it can be whenever is convenient for you.
I too would not like to get eight.
Okay, so, finance, and we put Carrie, Ed, and Nathan?
And finance currently meets, I want to say at four o'clock on the Tuesday before the meeting. But again, if that doesn't work for you guys, that can be changed as well.
Second Tuesday.
The, no, the, the same, so two days before is the Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So I think it's, we need a third, Thursday, right?
Certain Thursday.
Except this month.
Okay, so, just before we finish on this, this is something I don't know, how, what, what's your opinions? How, who, how many of these committees should I be on as chair?
According to the bylaws, you're a member of, you're a.
According to the bylaws, you're a member of, you're a standing member of all of them.
Is that, is, I don't see that.
No, according to the bylaws, you're a nominating governance committee. You're not. That's very strange.
What about ethics?
That's one I've been on.
Okay.
I was thinking, I don't think it's.
I remember.
Okay, so back to, sorry for that interruption. So the joint conference committee, let's see, we had Nathan and Corinne. So Nathan, do you have time to be on these committees?
When does it meet?
Somebody should know.
Um, joint conference meets quarterly, so we meet January, April, July, October.
Okay, so Corinne and, and Nathan on the joint conference committee. Governance, that will be. Miss, and then we're gonna, so both, both the joint conference committee and the governance committee, we will, we will rotate people in and out. We'll just go down the line and rotate, unless we find that's not working. We find that's not working, then we'll make some changes. Foundation, Corinne, are you good for that, or do you feel like you're starting to get on too many? Who else wants to have foundation, somebody else?
Nathan.
Oh, Nathan's already on a watch. I don't think they're meeting really often right now, what I understand, so I think that would be okay. Okay, so Corinne, you're on foundation as well. And ethics, Mary, you said you wanted to speak?
I will be, yeah.
Okay, so can I, and then I'll put myself on that also. No, foundation, just have one.
Oh, just one.
Yeah. And so, let's see, so Nick, I've got you on quality and governance. And is that, is that all I said? Are you happy with that?
Yeah. Yours.
Okay, Mary, I've got you on quality and ethics, is that good? Corinne, I've got you on quality, joint conference and foundation. And here, oh, Corinne.
May I be the first one in joint conference?
Joint conference committee? Yes. Okay.
It might be. Unless Ted wants it.
Well, I was going to make, when you're finished.
Okay, you were next.
Okay, me being next, I am on finance currently, which quite a job, it's still. I would look down through there and see where you're short of a trustee on the board.
Okay, so, so governance is the, governance is the other, so you want to be on governance?
Sure.
Okay, so I just effectively got rid of both our rotating ones. Good, so, and Nathan, I have you down for finance, joint conference. And governance. Can't go more than four? Oh, right, can't go more than three.
I'm going. Will we be going to rotate somebody off?
That's what I wanted.
So how, so you can just rotate the on and off.
Okay, so, so it might be that you and Ted tend to be the ones that rotate on and off at that conference. I don't know.
We consider it Wednesday, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it is usually Thursday, I don't know what time, but.
Nine, I want to say nine thirty or nine thirty.
We can, nine, so, or I don't.
We can make that.
We can make, we can figure out what time, but that's, we can't, I can't do that.
How long is this quality?
Quality means every month, just once a month.
Yeah, once a month.
Finance means once a month, joint conference is three, is every three months, governance is how we decide. Foundation varies, and ethics is every, once every three months. Okay, are we good to go? Okay, so now we need to, has everybody seen the minutes?
That I'm sure.
Yes.
It appears that you need to move. Well, one of the things you need to do is let the chairman.
Yes, I do, thank you for reminding me, Ted. Okay, so, Nick, will you be? Corinne is automatically chair of finance. Oh, yeah.
Is that okay if you have to pick that?
Definitely. Nathan, are you, I don't know how, I'm not sure there's a chair.
I'm not sure there's a chair on that.
I think it's mostly meeting with.
With them, yeah, so, so we'll just.
Treasury will report out, we'll report out here.
And governance, I will, I'll chair that one. Foundation, again, that's not, you don't really, the foundation chairs chair, and ethics, do you want to share that? Want to, can, I can share all of it.
On your joint conference committee, it says be co-chaired by the chief of staff, Black, I don't know who that is, and a member of the board of trustees.
Okay, so Nathan, I'm gonna make you co-chair on that. Okay, so now, I think, I think we should have a motion to approve those approve those committee assignments. I have a second.
Who made the motion?
Thank you. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. Okay. Let's see, now, let's go on to the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read those two sets of minutes or the? Were they, they all listed for the, plus you didn't swear very much. So, so that, I'm really thinking that Nick should make the motion. Read the minutes.
I'll move.
Okay. Okay, now on to, was that, did that include both the regular meeting and the special meeting, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. Are we doing this best? That there's the regular and the special?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good, okay, so next on the agenda is visitor comments. Do we have any comments?
I have one. I'm obviously a medical staff member and communicating with outpatient services department. Apparently we all have discussed this quality committee. And it hasn't, hasn't been a medical staff committee discussed later. And I just want to ask if as a board today and consecutive session come to any conclusions about what you want to do with that, I'd like to give me a call, let medical staff come and be involved in that stuff.
Does anybody have your number?
I have it. Okay, so I'm unaware of of what you're talking about.
Well, I talked to people who were, we get on staff members who were at that meeting. How is this plan going to be handled and? It's going to be presented to you like by your CPO and I just. I don't believe any medical staff person has been involved in discussions about how to handle this. So are you wanting to join in?
If I could, yes, if you have one, I'd like you to. If you only have one, that's a plan.
Okay. Is there any other visitor comments? Okay, so I, I want to say that as chair, I do my hope and goal is to include visitor comments and to I want to give and take between the community and, and so keep me accountable on that, make sure I'm I'm being a chair that's giving and taking on that. Um, okay, CEO report.
Thank you. First off, we are investing in our compliance, risk, privacy and security programs. We're investing in our electronic network. We did have our state trauma survey last week of efficiency, they, they did give us a professional status. It is state. It stated we need to beef up our compliance QA quality assurance program as well as recommend that we select someone as a trauma manager. And I do want to say a big thank you and they did to Deb Hocke, Director of Public Security Services, and Dr. Plankman as well. And they will return in one year. Community needs assessment has to be completed in two thousand twenty-four. I brought this before the board a couple of months ago. We have one bid from Ready Help at twenty-five thousand, waiting on a bid from Align to submit the proposal. And then we'll bring it to the board for a vote on those. Radiology construction, Phelps will begin de-installation of the oak room on June thirtieth and delivery of the new room on July the eighth, with installation taken approximately two weeks, then training after that. Oxygen bids are, will be in, have to be in by the twenty-first of May to Mike Gassing, but Christian Terrell. The drawings have been sent to the state, so we're awaiting state approval. The state bar marshal did approve those drawings. And the two thousand twenty-three audit will be presented from DGA out of Washington State at the J Board meeting.
So will it be finished, do you think? Will it be finished, the audit?
Yes.
But on the J Board?
That's what they will present.
Is there any other? Okay. How do we want to handle it, finance? Do you want to, do you want to give us, Jennifer? Do you want to, do you want to give us some of the? Highlights?
Sure. I brought up.
Good.
So for, so what a cash flow reported is.
Can I get one?
Yeah. There's twenty. Does everybody here have? So that is year-to-date, so that is from June fiscal year, so that's from July first till April thirtieth. Is what that report is. So what a cash flow reported is, it's all of our money, so that's all the money that is on our bank account. So any money that has come in, it doesn't matter if it's our taxes, if it's our grant, if it's our AR. Any money that has come into the hospital district is under, that's where you'll find it for the, for the income. And the expenses is anything that has left the hospital district to the penny. So for this month, for the operating receipts, we have twenty million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. The retail pharmacy is four million, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. The merchant account is one million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. The money market interest, so this is just the interest, is one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. I bid a five, seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. The Harry Ackley interest is twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. The Harry Ackley memorial CD interest is one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents. Operating disbursement is fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents. The monthly income was twenty-six thousand, twen, sorry, twenty-six million, forty-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents. So the difference for like the operating receipts from last month to this month, we are down six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-one cents. Retail pharmacy has gone up a hundred and twenty-two thousand, twenty-four dollars and six cents. The money market interest has gone up one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. So for our expenses, for like our, all of our like bills and payroll was nineteen million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and five cents. Returned items, so like if it was like a buy check that was returned was twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. The hospital district pharmacy, so that's the cardinal that comes out of the operating receipts account, was.
Am I reading?
Yeah.
I'm reading the totals.
I'm just to clarify, the totals that you're reading are year-to-date, not month. You said monthly totals, but they're not, they're year-to-date. So I just don't want anyone to think we had twenty-six million dollars in a month.
I got nervous.
I get it, I get it.
So my report is different than yours. I blew mine up, so I could read, and it was only the two months and then the total, so I got. So you want me to start over, or do you want me just to give you the, the? Green grass in the thing. So for our income, we have two million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents was our income.
For this year.
For, no, just for this month. I was reading the totals for the year, guys. Um, the operating expenses for all of our expenses was two million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. So for the month, we are negative one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Year-to-date, it would be negative two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
You're right, so you're off.
I'm still. So you're, or April.
Yeah, for April, there was two million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars in income.
Yes.
And two million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars in outflows, leaving a profit, so to speak, of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty on the month.
No, because we have outstanding checks. It's a loss of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven thirty-nine.
Can I make a statement just to clarify? So by my calculations, for the fiscal year so far, I think we have a month or so left. The vacant count has gone down one and a half million dollars. So that's this number. Edit them up just to check, I don't even need it. So that's really the big takeaway, is our vacant count is one and a half trillion dollars smaller here today.
Correct. We have two million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents in CDs, we have two CDs. One is the forty-five thousand, Harry Ackley CD that we just used the interest on. Our cash right now is four million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two seventy, and I thought of today, these are as of today, it's not a reason right now.
So Jennifer, is it okay, man? If I added up the CD and checking all things, I think we could consider basically change. What about moving to a new? What would this move be? Give me those numbers one more time.
The total of our savings?
Of our savings, so CDs.
So our cash is four million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two seventy. Our CDs is two million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents on this.
The CDs, how long is the gas required to be?
So we have two CDs. The forty-five thousand dollar CD, what I've been told is that it's for, we take that, the interest of it and then it goes into our Harry Ackley bank account and then it's for education purposes, that's what I was told.
So CDs are timed. They're typically a big penalty to this society us from using that. You know, you can follow up later. I just wanted to know if you know.
So my job, what I do on a daily basis is I am with the AP PR specialist. And when I, when my boss left, we didn't have anybody in the accounting system, in the accounting department. I've taken on all of my stuff that I'm doing and adding all of the other stuff that is, you know, kind of going to the wayside, which there's so much that we want. Takes two or three people to do. And so I don't know all of the information that you're asking at this time.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just wanted to know if you haven't, and I'm happy to.
I don't want to trip into our money market.
Yes, you got thrown into it, so you are.
So, um, out of our money market, might need to be this too. The last time that we took money out of our money market, we took one million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars out to our money market. But that was before November eighth. We have not taken any money out after November eighth. But since then, we have put in three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and sixty-five.
How much?
Three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and sixty-five. Three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand and sixty. Three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand and sixty-five.
Since November, December?
Yes, that has.
Or for two thousand, two-three?
Yes, that has.
May I ask, don't we have twelve thousand dollars, is that turned over to collections and?
No, it was taken care of.
Okay. So there's a zero for?
It will be in there.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Do you have more questions? Thank you. Okay.
Um, so next up credentialing, we have Kevin Boy, who is a neurologist of blue sky neurology. Blue sky neurology is part of our toestro. And then we have Jacob, who's a PA with Black Forest. We do need a function for those, so you guys just want to take a look at them. Um, so our credentialing files go through the quality, you can look at them. I'm nothing concerning in those charts and quality is always.
So we'll, yeah, we'll review results yesterday. So carry.
So if anybody else wants to review, make sure to get them.
So.
What kind of person?
Yeah. I, so let's start with one and then.
So the quality, what is their recommendation?
Yeah, what is?
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were good.
They're one of the Dakota radiology, they're both contractors that contract in first. Yeah. So they're basically, one of those pre-credentia. No, they're, they're contractors with Dakota radiology and then neurology group that we contract with. So they already went through all the credentialing with, with them that they actually are qualified and that they. Exactly, because they, they.
They weren't here.
They weren't here.
Um, I.
I mean, like.
Kim, these, they're, these are contractors, so we, they don't actually come onsite, correct?
No, they're consultants, yeah.
Yeah. Um, actually, sorry, Jacob Pinyway woke onsite as outpatient with Black Forest though, to stub out Dr. Plankman. So he has to.
Okay, so just fill these, so do, basically, we just need a motion to accept these?
Yes. And they've gone through.
You want to look at them first?
Uh, they have gone through medical staff as well, um, so they've looked at them, approved them, and so you guys are the last.
Medical staff and that's all you've both taken care of it, that is good.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
A second.
Ever, ever, all in favor?
I agree.
All opposed? Okay, um, so we've got finance committee, medical staff, credentialing, medical staff report.
Um, so medical staff, um, we met, um, last month, obviously. Um, so we talked about our back orders. We've got Rissy McEppie, it's still on back order. Joy gave some information about the back orders, that some manufacturers are pulling out and no longer producing some medicines. Um, so we might have some issues going forward with more medicines in the future. She's keeping a good eye on our medication supply and making sure that we've got what we need. Um, there was, uh, some need in the manner for some carbidopol levodopa, which is a Parkinson's type medication, needing a liquid form of it. Um, so she was working to try to find that so we can compound it for one of our residents over there that needs it. Not so much the pill form. Um, radiology, we talked about CT contrast guidelines. Um, so patients with a poor GFR, and a GFR is part of the kidney function testing. Um, anybody with a poor GFR, less than forty-four, needs to have an updated value within two days of. Trust, just to make sure that you need to spare that contrast. Um, so that's a new protocol kind of coming out of there, so we discussed that. Um, and we just kind of wanted to develop a standing order so that radiology doesn't have to call over every single time to say, hey, can I get a doctor's order for this? Um, so if we just have that standing order or protocol, um, that order will just be there when it's needed. Um, oral contrast, we talked about that as well. Um, the barium contrast is going to be going away for Dakota radiology recommendations. Imaging these days is so good that they don't need that barium. Um, and Keisha gave some education that the barium can actually cause some issues with the imaging because it is so good these days, that it can cause um, like shadowing or something like that within the imaging. Um, ultrasound, um, the gentleman was supposed to be here last week. He was trying to let the sound return himself. Um, you're gonna, he's gonna come and just kind of check the gals off on like their final carotid, um, testing and make sure. And then once they're checked off, we'll start opening that up for outpatient scans. Um, so the two gals will do back scanning on each other. And basically back scanning is I scan the patient, I turn where I see. She comes in behind, scans and says, yeah, I agree, so. Um, and then the x-ray room, we kind of touched on that. Um, it's going to be good to go, June third for demolition should be up and running by rally, so. Um, lab, we were working on getting some spot fire quotes for the clinic. Um, he was just working on negotiating a lower price. Um, so we'll probably discuss that at this next meeting, what his findings were. Um, nursing home report, we had forty-one residents at the time. Um, no admissions later for that last couple of weeks in there. But we were waiting for some discharge paperwork on a community member, I believe, out of Casper, so we're still waiting for that. Um, so we do have some additional, I think, coming here in the next couple of weeks, so. Sorry, I'll, I'll speak up. Um, okay, so that's all I have for med staff, on to quality.
Wait, do we have any questions?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Anybody have questions? Okay.
All right, quality. So this is our platform that we use for our performance improvement and our event reporting system. Um, so this is our dashboard, all of the staff get access to this. So this right here is our dashboard of all of the performance measures that we're working on. Um, so if you were to click in, get in here and click on, say, emergency, you can see here all of the, uh, performance measures that we're working on within here. So this is where I get a lot of my data from, so this ED transfer times, um, is a measure that we do track. Anyways, so we've got our benchmark in here. And you can see when we're not meeting our benchmark, it tells you where we want to be on our benchmarks, the lower is better. The critical level, if we're fifteen points above this benchmark, it'll flag it red.
And it would have been interesting to see how many votes may have changed because of Gordon's actions, because of the response of their communities after those bills were passed, specifically the gun-free zone bill. I think that, I think that we would have very much seen a change in votes on that one. I think you would have seen more nay votes on that than you had before.
Are, so you're saying that, uh, that some folks were counting on the governor veto in that one?
I very much one hundred percent think that especially school districts, courthouses, places like that, were baking that the governor was going to go, no way are we letting guns in these areas. And, and I think that their response afterwards may or may not have swayed some of those representatives and senators to vote a different way because the response was strong.
And you can see when we're not meeting our benchmark, it tells you where we want to be on our benchmarks, the lower is better. The critical level, if we're fifteen points above this benchmark, it'll flag it red. Um, so this is how we get our information. All of the managers have performance measures that they document on, and so every meeting for quality, we take a look at the dashboard, we go through all of the events. Board members question all of the events that come in, you guys have access, you can ask questions on what's going on. Um, so this is action Q, and you guys will get a little bit more training, um, especially my new quality. You'll get more training on that, um, how to access things, what to look at. Um, once you get comfortable in it, it's very user-friendly. Um, let's see here. Patient satisfaction surveys, um, about twelve hundred of them went out last month and sixteen point seven seven of them came back, which is about two percent increase from last month. Um, current number of temp staff, um, we've got five temp staff, we've got four CNAs in the long-term care and one in acute care. Um, I'm not sure if you guys saw on Facebook, but we had our Daisy slash pedal launch party on.
Monday?
Is it Monday? Um, so the Daisy Award for all of you that are unfamiliar is a international award for nurses. Um, it was developed by a patient that had passed away. His family wanted to thank the nurses that he had had during his care. Um, so they developed this award and we have decided to bring it to our facility as a way to thank our nurses and recognize our nurses for all the good care that they give. Um, and so we have decided to also do what's called a pedal award, which is going to be for our non-nursing staff. So that's anybody that comes in contact with a patient, um, the support staff, to thank them as well and recognize them um, for all the good work that they do as well. And so nominations from that come from the community and the patients, um, typically can come from other staff members, doctors. Um, but we're really hoping to get that community involvement. Um, another thing we're working on is our five-star quality rating in the manner. Um, so that's a quality measure that, um, is reported out quarterly to the mess and everything like that. Um, so our five-star rating right now went from a, I believe, a three or four star down to a one star. And so we figured out when our residents go from, um, the long-term care over to the ER, but they don't get admitted, it dings our quality score. Um, so we've been working with the providers to do more outpatient care. Um, so ordering labs, ordering x-ray on some of the residents before just sending them to the ER um, to see if we can't treat these residents outpatient-wise. And then our ED wait times, you know, we're right here. ED wait times are looking good. Our ED arrival to transfer is just a little bit high. Um, and that's because we've been seeing some, um, hospital diversion. Um, our providers haven't accepting, but those providers need a little bit more testing done, which then delays the patient from getting out the door. Um, so that's why our numbers are a little high these days. Um, but down a lot from COVID days, so. Um, home health, everything's going good. Helen's got a new nurse starting in a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks. Um, clinic survey return rate, we had an increase of one percent. It was at eighteen point seven return rates. And then pharmacy, Joy's going to talk about the packaging machine, so all good things. Any questions that are on quality?
Hey, do you want to, do you have anything else to add to quality committee?
No, I think you're going to talk about the fact, she, that was the one thing I didn't mention, but she says it's, I said, Joy to talk about it, so, uh, no. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Okay, um, whole business, radiology, construction, everything.
Jacob.
You're already. Is, I'm looking for Keisha, is she not here today?
Yeah, she's picking her mouth at the table.
Oh, very good. Um. The governance committee, I don't think they have report for that, so anybody. Um, finance committee. Um, do we have, Randy, do we have any reports for this? Like, I don't have anything. Utilization.
No, we are working. Uh, and Durbin and Associates will touch base on that on the department. Anything else?
Oh, okay, all right.
Then we're working on the, uh, the provider reports.
Right, so we have no legalization specifics.
And Reverend and I will touch base. But, uh, they built the budget, there was no depreciation built in there or contractual allowances.
Okay, and. President, communication. I don't, I've not been president long enough to. Other than like I said right at the beginning, I, I want to do my very best with this board to, to work as a team. I want to. I want us to be able to agree, I want us to be able to disagree, and I want us to be able to come together and make it this easy. Okay, Durbin.
I'll make them. I mean.
I'm like.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
You can hear me? Okay, I've got just a quick slideshow I would like to share if that's possible. It's three or four slides, just I want to kind of give you a bullet point, if that's okay with you guys.
Yes.
Hopefully I won't. And I don't know what you can see, so hopefully you can see a dark screen that says Western County.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we, we were asked to give an assessment of the financial accounting department, kind of what's been going on, what hasn't been going on. And so we had a staff up there about two weeks ago, and what I've done, I've just put together a list of what we have found. Where we sit, let me see. So we had, we had a staff up there, April twenty-ninth to the third, and this is what we've found. The audit for two thousand twenty-three is not finished. I know as of today, there are a couple of items that they, we've been in an email thread with the audit group of, of DZA. Couple of items I've asked for in order to meet that, uh, June board meeting. Um, not all bank reconciliations have been completed. There's about ten different bank accounts that have not been reconciled since six-thirty of twenty-three. Money, monthly accounting entries have not been complete, and currently it looks like there's no staff or limited staff in order to make those monthly entries. Fixed asset depreciation schedules are incomplete, and I believe the, uh, uh, audit firm and also the prior, uh, group that was working on it is, is keeping those, uh, fixed asset depreciation schedules. We've asked to get copies of prior years in order to help move that forward. Um, on the balance sheet, there's other amortization schedules, just not complete, other assets. AP had not been reconciled since June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. We have some entries for student loan repayments that haven't been made since June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. There's another, we found one student loan for which. There's another, we found one student loan for which uh HR is keeping a manual repayment schedule. It's on the general ledger. CIP goes along with our depreciation schedule, has not been set up. The Meditech, you're in the middle of a server change or a computer system change. You're going from Meditech over to Sage. Um, and I know the Sage numbers are supposed to be converted as of two-one. There's been numbers put into the new accounting system as of one-one, which you didn't go live until two-one. And some of the, in some of the balances that were brought over into Sage as of one-one were not correct. Um, payroll is being generated through ADP, so there's manual entries that are still having to be made, and obviously you all know that current financial statements are not being generated. Again, we've been asked to do just kind of a quick analysis, you know, assessment of where things stand. And so that's the quick down and dirty of where things stand. Um, I am open for questions and and hopefully we have some questions and thoughts of how the board wants to move forward and and how we can help in that process. I know that's a lot of information really quick, so if I've gone too fast, please tell me and I can go back through those slides.
Can you please, just so we all know what this, the scope of your service is and and what we've engaged you to do and accomplish.
So what we were asked to do is just give an assessment of where, and if you're okay, I'm gonna well, y'all can still see me, okay, sorry, I'm, y'all are real small on my screen. We were asked to give an assessment of of what is the accounting department look, or what are the, what are the financial statements look like? Um, currently, uh, when we came up in in January to meet with the board, you know, we wanted, we always believed that having audited numbers, that's your basis and that's your starting point, then moving, you know, we can go ahead and start looking at what things have been done and what things have not been done. And so that's what we spent our time was looking at what has happened in fiscal year twenty-four inside the system. That's what we've been engaged, that's what we've been asked to do up to this point. And so this is just a summary of what we found when we had staff onsite. We have been asked to help with, you know, with the budget for the current year, the next upcoming year. Um, we're, we're working on that now, and I know that's due here in the next uh week, I believe. Um, but at that point, at this point, that's what we've been engaged to do. We have no engagement letter to do additional services. Kind of waiting on this assessment in order for the board to make a decision on how we want to move forward, if we want to move forward.
Is there a way for us, like? I would really like a printed version of what you just told us, is that possible?
Absolutely, I can, I can email that to your group, absolutely.
Can you do it um soon?
I can do it as soon as we get, as soon as I stop talking. I guess I could actually do it while we're talking, if you want me to. I'm gonna stop sharing her.
Question, Tommy, how do we move forward from here and have you had any discussions with anyone, Randy or anyone on proposals for getting us where we need to go or a plan?
We, we have, I have visited, I have visited with Randy and Sandy and I'm, and I'm not sure who else was on that last, one of the last meetings about kind of what, what, what our thoughts would be, you know, and how can we help and move forward? Um, but again, there's been no proposal given, there's been no fee set or anything like that with our firm at this point. Again, when we, when we came up in January, we were asked to kind of give a update of what do we see, you know, what, what does it look like? And we waited, we wanted to waited, we wanted to wait for that audit to be done because again, if the beginning of the year numbers are solid with an audited financial statement, then we can really tell what's going on. That way, we don't have to worry about six thirty, twenty-three and prior. We're gonna focus on, you know, this fiscal year. Uh, we waited a little while, wait, we're waiting for DZA to wrap that up, and I know there's been communication going back and forth. Like I said, I think they had two open items in the email thread I saw today. And so now we can look and that we can sit down and figure out how do we wanna attack it, you know, how do you wanna attack it? These are your financials as a board and management, and how can we help?
You, can you tell us briefly what you told?
Sure, sure, we've got, and so we've got a lady named Patty, we've got a staff that came and spent a week there. Um, we can, one, we, we don't want to be, nor do you want us to be your daily CFO on site. I mean, that's just realistically, you, you don't want that, and we don't want that either, right? Um, we can provide a ton of support remotely, we can do a lot of work remotely. Um, but what I told Randy is, we really need somebody on the ground that works for your facility to be doing a lot of the legwork. I mean, at the end of the day, that is the goal, and and I told Randy, I think I told the board this when I was January, we wanna help you work ourselves out of a job. We wanna get you caught up and get through the crisis and hopefully be able to help train people in order, you know, to move you forward. That would really be our goal and objective. Can that happen in thirty or sixty days? Realistically, not going to. When you're looking now at eleven months worth of activity, that's gonna have to be caught up on. Not, that's just not realistic in a thirty or sixty day window. How long would it take? I honestly can't tell you that. Um, I explained to them yesterday, usually the first couple of months when we have cleanup situations, the first couple of months are usually the real struggles. Cause you're having to go, and especially we have no history with, with your organization. So we're having to go and dig and figure things out. What we have found historically with cleanups, after the first couple of months, we kind of figure out where things weren't ta- weren't taken care of, you know, kinda we can help. Usually it starts going faster and faster with cleanup after the first couple of months of cleanup. Um, but I can't give you a timeframe, I mean, I, I don't wanna lie to you. I wanna tell you it could be three months and it not, I, I just don't wanna do that. Um. My thought, again, my thought is to have somebody onsite, one or two people that can just focus on it and help, and and we can do, like I said, we've um, Patty, the lady that came up, she is an ex, she was a CFO for twenty-five years and a CEO. She retired and got bored a year later, so we hired her. She called us and said, can I work greens? Like, absolutely. And so she's got thirty plus years in that role. And that's why we'd love to put her on these kind of jobs, is she's been there, she has sat behind that desk and and fought those battles. But you don't wanna pay us her full rate to be your daily CFO, I mean, just being honest with you, we'll do whatever we can to help you get through this, but the goal again would be to have somebody onsite that can do a lot of the legwork, the, the, to tracking down stuff, I mean, we we have access to your system, we can see a lot of files, but there may be stuff that we just need somebody on the ground to help do that. Again, get you through the crisis, get you caught up, help prepare internal financials. I've seen some of the historical financial reports that have been given. Um, and they are what they are, they're, they're generated out of the system. Uh, we look at things differently, uh, I mean, my, just so you know, we are a healthcare firm. Um, I've been auditing hospitals for about twenty-five years. My whole firm, we are healthcare. We don't do construction, we don't do banks, we are healthcare. So we've seen a lot of, we have a lot of ideas for board packets and what boards might be interested in, but really at the end of the day, the board needs to decide what they wanna see on a finance, on a monthly state, on a monthly basis. What does the board want? And that's something that we would wanna help the team build. That way you get everything caught up, you get everything reconciled, and then you just start turning it monthly, and that way your, your finance team's able to press a button and say, okay, we're ready for the board meeting. This is what the board wants, we know what they want. They want one schedule, they want a hundred, whatever it is, and that's really our goal, is to help you get to that point. Cause ultimately, you've gotta have accurate and updated financials to make financial decisions for the, for the facility.
I mean, we had talked about the last few weeks about uh you know, getting additional, maybe a couple additional uh whether part-time or one full-time people in there to help. Uh, but then, once we get everything lined out, uh, you can still be our fractional CFO.
We, our firm can definitely do that, that, yeah, we can definitely do that, but again, I, we, we wanna help you get through this, we wanna help train whoever it is on a day level. And we've gone in and helped do cleanups, and we've actually, like I said, we've talked, we've worked ourselves out of a job, and we're perfectly content with that. Because at the end of the day, you need, every hospital needs those people onsite every day that know the numbers inside and out. And that's really what we wanna help you get to. We can do fractional CFO work. We can come in after the books are closed and do that high level review. We do that for a couple of other facilities. We come in and see that, I call it the thirty thousand foot level view of, okay. One, we wanna make sure everything's reconciled, cash is reconciled, those types of things, but then we look at your allowances for the month. You know, we have a lot of experience and look at it contractuals and bad debts on a monthly basis and look at trends. We can help with that, um, and give us, give you our thoughts on that kind of stuff. Um, but really help, and again, help get the board prepared or get the packs prepared for board, we can absolutely do that. But until before that can be done, there is a lot, a lot of work to be done. Like I said, we know, we know ten bank accounts have not been reconciled since that six thirty, twenty-three month. And so there's a lot, a lot of work to do.
Right, and I, and I talked to you about this, and I talked to our auditors about this. Uh, CFOs are not out there anymore. I mean, four CFO, hospital CFOs, uh, uh for this Wyoming, and if you look across the United States, they're just not out there. They may come for a year, then they're on the bigger and better thing, then it's just a, a battle to recruit a full-gone CFO.
It, it can be difficult. We have, I mean, we're, we're based out of Texas and we deal with a hundred hospitals, and trust me, the, the great CFOs that you find, they never leave. The ones that are worth their weight in gold, those facilities take care of them. I mean, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast. Healthcare is such a special niche, too. I mean, the late counting for healthcare, for healthcare entities is just a different animal. And it's something that you've gotta love, you've gotta have a passion for at the end of the day, but yeah, it's difficult to find. Not saying they're not out there, you might find somebody that wants to live in Eastern Wyoming, and that would be great. Um, but they're not running around, I promise you, they're not running around here in Texas either, a lot of them. Just for you, you know, for you, just willing to go everywhere. So it is a struggle.
I think we need, I think the board needs to decide what they want in their board package, financial standpoint. What financials they want, and we got a lot of work to do before we get there.
Yeah, I don't know where to direct this question to. Is our financial department, is it a check and a double-check system? Is someone that receives the checks and someone that causes the checks or?
Yeah, well, we have that, but it's still needed. We, we, we need about a, a decimal. One and a half FTE, but we need additional training uh for people like Derby and them uh to get our people where they need to be.
Other questions? Doing the audit that we're waiting for.
DZA, yeah, the worst and sad, but the board pick, visiting the two thousand twenty-three audit. Great to work with them.
Do you have any other stuff, anything else you wanna tell us?
No, no, I just wanted to give the board an update. Again, we were there in late January and and we've kind of been working on this, and we finally just said, we've gotta come up with what we have. We were wanting that audit wrapped up to be, to make sure those beginning numbers for your fiscal year were updated. We finally just pulled the plug and said, we've gotta figure out what's going on. And that's why we sent our, our Patty up there to look at it. So I wanted to give you an update. Again, we are here to help in any form or fashion, whatever that may be. Um, Randy's got my contact information, and any of you are more than welcome, just call me. If you wanna just talk, I, I don't mind it, he's got my cellphone. I don't mind those discussions at all, then we're here to help and and let us know what we can do to help, help you get through this.
You're gonna be in the area in June, and you mentioned yesterday.
I, I, I'm actually taking a family trip, we're gonna spend a week in, and I'm taking my eleven-year-old up to Mount Rushmore in that area. And it's the week of your board meeting of all things. Um, and so I haven't gotten permission from the wife yet, but I probably can make that happen. I would love to come meet you and just talk to you face to face. I'm in the area. Um, no charge, obviously, I'm gonna be there, so that's even the better part, right? Um, but I would love to come and visit, and and if there's a better day, just to visit with a couple of you or whatever, like I said, I'm gonna be there the whole week. It's kind of crazy how it worked out, but I don't mind sitting down and visiting or doing whatever I can.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank y'all.
Thanks, Tommy, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Provider contracts?
Now, these are actually provider agreements on the mid-levels, and uh, one uh medical doctor that I will be presenting to the medical staff once they review and then they'll have to come back to the board.
So what are you thinking about? Where, when, how, what?
Mid-levels, uh, mid-levels are three curtains they have, uh, to be able to work the clinic, uh, assistant in them to their contract, and Dr. Haverly, uh, once again, they'll work three days a week, so we'll take that before the medical staff. And then we'll work with three additional local companies for additional staffing.
Any other, any questions? I guess I do have a question. Do you and Dr. Haverly have some, are you having an agreement to some terms you're gonna present to the medical staff when?
The medical staff is next week, and Dr. Haverly was supposed to be this week, but thank you, so you can come in next week to talk to HR, myself, and Kim. And kind of review his contract.
Okay, and do you think you have an agreement on a contract with him?
I have an agreement for him to review, yes.
Any other questions? Privacy coach?
Now, so the privacy coach has to do with, uh, as you see in your pamphlet, uh, that was recommended by the previous board and our attorney uh, to work with Kim and compliance and quality, to get her educated and invest in our own staff to the board with compliance issues and uh policy and uh education and training. For not only her, but the board and the leadership team. You have that outline there, you don't have to act on this tonight, I mean, take it back, review it, uh, discuss it, take it back a minute.
What's everybody thinking about that?
I think we do it.
Yeah, please. As long as, if nobody wants to do this tonight, is that right? Am I reading everybody right? Okay, so now, um, we've got the packaging. Packaging, packaging machine.
Lots of information. So, I know some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm Joy, I'm the inpatient pharmacy manager. So we have a machine in our pharmacy. Anybody's welcome to come look at it, I'm happy to show it. It is a giant robot. What it does is it packages meds for our manner, our clinic, and our acute care side. So we have this machine, it's called the Talus, it's the version we have, which is, is a brand name. And looking at our machine, they run about fifty-two hundred doses through that machine right now. We're on end-of-life on the machine, we bought it and installed it nine years ago. It was used when we purchased it and installed it. I can't get exact dates on the machine, the company knows it's over ten years old. Ten years is the lifespan of the machine. So we've been having more and more met airs out of the machine, dumping pills together, um, brushing the pills, chopping pills, um, not packaging the right pills, cause things are, can get loosened and Jan brought the wrong medication, the wrong packaging. So we set up a police's team with a manner, they get the bulk of our meds, which is about forty-eight hundred doses a week we run through this machine. And we started looking at options, bringing things to table, and what can we do? Because at some point, this machine is going to go down. I don't have a service contract on the machine. Their machine is no, this version is no longer in production, it went out of production ten years ago. And we are not sure we can get parts to repair it. To get a service person in here to assess it, if it goes catastrophically, something breaks in it. They're coming from Seattle, Washington. They don't know if they'll be able to get parts, it depends on what goes wrong on the machine. So we have to start looking at what other options do we have. So we sat down in a group and we looked at met airs, and I'll go through, starting on the per section. So on this large machine, there's currently only two companies that produce these machines worldwide, the size of the machine that we have. One is Swiss Log, which is the Talus machine, which is what we have upstairs. The other company is BD, which is a part of the machine. Those machines are very, very similar in what they do, basically. Um, very comparable. Very comparable in doing large amounts of packaging, packaging individual doses, packaging what we call a run of medication, which is a program. So it packages for seven days supply, starting in the morning for the evening time, or in the package of 30 day supply in a roll. So what we looked at and what we ran through on our machines and coming out of this is several factors on, on our machines. So I'm going to run through my notes. Security of patient information. We send patient information from our billing system, which is QS1 through this machine. What is compatible? Will it be compatible with our current software? QS1 is compatible with both companies. And there is a charge for interface with Swiss Love. There's not a charge for interface with Arda. Looking at our current software, running on 2007 software on the machine, which is a security risk. When we bring in the new machine, we wouldn't have that security risk because we could upgrade everything independently and maintain firewall protection. So as we go through this, the part of machine, the one that became as a group to look at as the best option for our facility is the BD 320 Black Hope. It's on the first page of the package that I presented and I'm happy to email any of this out to anyone who wants to look at data. It's quite a bit of data. So that machine, price for that machine, to purchase that machine is $467,000 to $287,000. That machine would have a 10 year lifespan and would come with several features that we currently don't have that would help with pharmacy staff use and safety for our medications. The part of machine, and if you go to the first quote from Parta and all the quotes I have in here, if you want to dig up quotes, you can. It'll kind of part of the, but I'll say BD Parta at the top. And then it'll be the 320 D2 320 wide machine. So you have your primary machine and that is like our packaging machine that will allow us to package meds, which currently if you set it to run, it runs through and packages the meds that are in the machine and drops it out. The additional features that are in the newer machine that are on the same, make sure you have the right one, that we're adding. So the top price is the price for the actual machine. When we go down to the universal lighted tray, this allows us to package in our runs, half tablets, hazardous meds, unusual meds can go through there because the machine can see them and recognize them and we can program them to do that. Currently, those medications are having to be prepackaged and dispensing baggies or sets that we can't run with the primary machine because we would miss hazardous or non-hazardous meds. Or our current package won't recognize a half tablet or an unusual medication. So that universal lighted tray would allow us to package the unusual doses into the same format as other medications. A part of Pearl pouch inspector, that's on there for 125,600, that's included in the overall price. That's an additional machine that will help with the checking of the meds. And Melissa in there has gone through this process with us. But all doses currently being printed have to be checked by, they're checked by a technician and then they're checked by a pharmacist. And when the machine is having lots of problems or a short staff, nursing has stepped up to help us check those individual doses. This would electronically check those doses when it flows through and then snap photos of those meds and tell us in the program, tell the pharmacist if there's a problem with the meds, if there's a wrong med packaged or a crushed med or a bad med in there. The system would let us know if that's in there, where it's located in that. The pearl cutting rule would take the medications coming out of the machine. So if we're looking, if anyone's looking to finance through the process, running to the manor right now takes us five to six hours once we start our machine running and somebody has to stay there with it to keep it running. And it all comes up in file and it's giant tape. And then we have to hand roll that for each individual patient. And that's taking our technician time about eight hours.
Well, I did add in for Joy there too, just as she suggested that you guys go and check out the machine there. I'm offering for you guys to come over to the manor. I'll pull out a cart and you can see the whole way that they're packaged, the different rules, because they run a seven day roll at a time. The different packaging that it comes in, it comes in a box, it comes in a, some of them come in bottles, some of them come in baggies, some of them come in the little foil pouches that you have to break apart. So her stating that that extra component that will do the half tabs, it'll do like the commands, the hazardous materials, it'll all go into the same roll. So we won't have five different ways to fill a medication up and potential errors being there because errors happen and they, and even myself going onto the cart the first time I did. They're color coded. I mean, it's nothing like I've passed medications before. I mean, we call them the bingo cards and they got the little popper out. So you got 31 days where it's there and that's where they come and, or it's just all one big candy strip. And unfortunately, that machine does not have that capability. So if you want to come over and see one of our carts over at the manor, just please give me a call and I will be happy to accommodate anytime.
I agree with Melissa, there's lots and lots of potential on whether on pharmacy side or medication side to have an error because of all of the different ways we're packaging medications and putting them out there for one patient. The medication packaging, the new system has some great capabilities for us and a variety of ways to package individual doses for acute care. I've been running seven day supply of the machine. I can run a 30 day supply. So we've got some future opportunities if we have unusual patients or specific packaging for those patients within the system. When we're looking at time wise, when we run the packages meds, so the whole frame process takes about six hours, start to finish, can't leave the machine. Technician takes at least one to two days to hand roll these medications and put them into the packet, the votes that we will send over to the manor. And then it takes six to eight hours for our pharmacist to go through and check those. And Melissa, your staff is sending about four hours on those checks?
About four hour check and that's an extra person or staff in addition to who we have on the floor. So they are just in a room somewhere checking the medications, just to make sure that the correct pill is in there and it's the correct roll in the correct boat.
Looking at some of the maintenance on these machines and why we chose Parta over Swiss Love. Is Parta, it's 90 days to bring in the machine onsite to start integrating it into our system. The support team, if something goes wrong with the machine, is coming from Denver. So if something happens, IT wise is a buzz or mechanical, we can have support staff here from Denver to report on the machine. It is a part of machine. There's several part of machines going in in Wyoming for the VA to be assigned a contact tool product for their packaging. And they're currently running that issue again. The Swiss Love Talus machine, six to nine months from the time they order until the machine is built and coming our way. If we need any support on our, on the Talus machine, the technician has to come from Seattle, Washington. So we have clients who work on the machine in the industry and asking other pharmacy directors and working on machines. Swiss Love is looking at possibly no longer offering Talus. When we went out and asked for bids, they have one machine and one option in that process. Parta has several, they quoted several of their options. The 320 machine, we can put 320 medications into that machine in canisters. And we can change those canisters to fit meds to help with that process of filling. If we need to expand that machine, we always have to expand that machine up to a 400, the 320 would match it. It's both plausible to the machine we're currently running. I know it's a lot of information. There's a lot of quotes in there. Parta quoted both purchase prices of all three machines and leasing. Swiss Love quoted a purchase price for a Talus and they can totally just option it for one. And those are the machines, the options that we're able to get on the market. We can look at bubble packing, the bubble packs that Melissa was talking about. Bubble packing, we do it by hand. So we would have to increase our pharmacy staff in our pharmacy space to be able to have bubble pack doses. 30 to 31 day supply. And that medication would have to be individually packed to check those bubble packs. I would have to add probably at least three to four staff members for the volume change and changes or just the whole process. As well as just add to a higher amount of money to dispose of or donate and accost patients. Currently with our Swiss Love system, so it's now filling patients every step. Patients are filled at a seven day, insurance is paying for seven day supplies. So they stop a med or not dispensing extra medications to those patients that they don't need. And then they don't have to worry about safe disposal and how many patients need charge for meds for them.
We have, are you ready for questions?
I'll just comment, like equality with, with Gotti and Jamie and I, the last few months, February, saw a pretty heavy increase in MedAirs due to this machine. So it is, I mean, I have documentation here, but I'm just vouching for that too. I've seen a number of MedAirs due to the machine, either spitting out more than needed or like you said, the last one I saw crushed pills. So it has been a need for a while, whatever that's worth.
Joy, you had a couple of prices in here, outright purchase costs. And then you had stuff from, I can't even say it, a bank.
The bank one is leasing.
Okay. Is there, so is the leasing like zero net financing or is there a finance cost in the?
There's a finance cost.
Do you know what the?
I don't know the specific percentage rate. I calculate that and get that to you on it to include.
The reason why I'll cost you should include my legal. And the reason why I was asking is because our local bank had asked us on a purchase of another piece of equipment to try and match rates. So I was, I would love to, if we can, give our local, if we are going to finance it and if we can, to give our local banks a chance to match or do better. And I can get, I'm looking at, making that.
Do we have any other questions? So, so I have a question just for the board. Is Nick, are you the only one that's been there and seen this?
I haven't seen it yet. I just was reading the reports and actually just piling up over the last month. Carrie, you were there the last week. You know, they presented that to us as well and it's been an issue. So this thing is sad, it's in the light. So I know.
It's an important quality of care issue that we really do need to correct.
And what Melissa was alluding to is also that the time and energy just to babysit it as well. So.
So do we have? Where we want to do?
Yeah, I'll tell you what I. Yeah, absolutely. So based on what Jennifer said, we have about 6.8 million cash, what she said, 4.7 million in money markets, which is not a time deposit. Not sure about this. So what Joy said is it will cost us about $47,000 to serve the machine that would do the work of three to four people. If you assume $15 per hour wage plus all the benefits and taxes, that's going to be $5,000. The people cost will be 150,000 here. So the machine from a financial standpoint, this earth price of the people plus the better quality. I'm going to say, I'm going to say that again. So Jennifer said, we have 6.8 million cash. If we finance it, we pay 79,000 interest over the six years. I can't figure out the bad rate. I have right now, but just so you know, $80,000. I don't know what we're earning in our money market, but we have to appear those rates, maybe a slight rate if the Fed drops rates, there could be a bigger difference. I'd also want to know if there's any early payment. For any reason, we couldn't be at all. So the machine is 467,000, including all the maintenance packages. And so she says it has a 10 year life. So then the cost is about 47,000 a year. If we hired three to four people, I just said three, it would be about 150,000 a year total if they worked 2,000 hours. That doesn't include construction costs. So the machine is better quality and it's basically a nerve price when you have people who live.
I think that's all good arguments. My only question is. We just don't know the whole financial situation. If we commit to 467,000.
I agree.
Without knowing a little bit better about our whole financial picture.
So what's?
The big amount.
Correct. Right. We do need that. I'd like to visit with Jennifer and just make sure it's all there and log in and everything. What's the backup plan right now? Team just stopped. What, what did people do?
The backup emergency plan, we're talking.
Yeah, I talked about that too.
So in the backup emergency plan, we're talking about in the pharmacy, we have these plastic cassettes we have to put meds into and clip lids on them. And we would have to get extra help because we're only running about a week ahead because we're billing at that week to get payments with Medicare, Medicaid, insurance. They don't want us billed ahead of that seven days. So we're pretty close to just a week ahead. So we would need staff, extra staff to come in and help us package in those cassettes so that we can get those meds out. We could always call Swiss Love and have them send a technician. That technician would be coming from Seattle and they could troubleshoot the machine. We may or may not be able to get it back up. There is a small tabletop packager she can get for hospitals that run, don't run the volume that we're running through the packaging machines. And we're currently waiting on a quote for what it would cost to bring one of those machines in to temporarily help. We're looking at a six, if it goes down and we can't get it back up, I'm looking at and expecting a six month window to get the new machine, get it programmed, interfaced and running.
So are they accessible?
They are reusable. If they were intensive, they will allow up to eight tablets to be put in them and they're color coded by time. We put them in the post around to the manor.
So is, is there flex staff anywhere available in the hospital?
I believe before I was here and before we had the packager, that nursing helped them fill the cassettes when they were in a pod. Nurses came in and helped.
So it would be manual, manual labor. It would be nursing and you just wouldn't want to have anybody, you know, going in there. Maybe could use a med aid, but that's taking our nurses off the floor. And I'm running out of my max staff right now that I have on the floor. So it would, it would be taking our resources off the floor to take care of the patients and to then go with medication codes.
And what the other option when we're looking at these quotes from Parta. The other option when we're looking at these quotes from Parda. And I know we're looking at budgets, we're looking at finances. We could bring in the packager and then look at bringing in additional pieces that roll later with the pieces that check electronic. Those can come in separately if they need.
Like the lighted tray and the?
The lighted tray has to be built in, but there are additional rollers and checking. They could bring in separately and later.
Would there be any way in the emergency to help source some other pharmacy that had a change? What?
I can check, but I don't think there's another pharmacy without transferring our patients and all of the going to another pharmacy. There's the Drug Securities and Exchange Act that requires that you dispense from the pharmacy that is went through the insurance. Otherwise, you have to keep the paperwork on every single tablet for eight years all the way back to the manufacturer.
Would there be a situation that they would rent one for two months? Come on, have that produced.
I don't know. We can always ask. These machines are pretty heavy. Wendy and I tried to move the machine yesterday and we had no luck.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to, as she mentioned a little bit, the current packager is working on Windows 7, which hasn't been supported for multiple years. So we have an access point for someone who would like to get in, who could get into our facility. Windows 7 hasn't been patched in at least three years. So we have security risks involved as well. And I know that's not as much as med, med air, but we're talking about a security risk as well. Each day we continue to use the packager. We have already had to purchase an additional battery backup for the packager, which was $2,700. So we're already putting money into the packager just to keep it going on the daily as well. So keep that in mind.
Where I was going was hopefully in June, we've got some kind of financial report. Last couple of weeks, I felt like it was a better decision. What, what was the lead time if, if we said yes hypothetically today?
Best case scenario, Parda, they build these machines and we order them. If they can have one here in nine years. Swiss Love, they'll be at least six months from the time to start the build before they can ship.
So that if we financed it, it would cost, according to the machine, about 9,000 a month.
I think if we can find out if we could finance it for a couple of months and then pay it off with no penalties.
I would, I would want to know.
Yeah, that would be the.
Have you been in contact? I'm not even trying to pronounce your name.
Yeah.
Is that through the manufacturer as a relationship?
That's through the manufacturer that we're in partnership with. I can definitely work with anybody at the board to get in contact and look at our quotes.
So if, if you could reach out. I have a list of questions for you. I'd like to know, is the rate fixed, the floating? And is there going to be? That would not be so. If you're floating. I'd just like to know those.
Joy, is there, is, was this in your capital budget for this year?
Yes, it was in the capital budget.
Yeah, for about this amount.
Yes.
And it was for around this?
If, if we don't act on this, my thoughts, if we don't act on this today, it looks, it sounds like this is not a new mission. It has serious, even if, how many nurses? Would we have to stop admitting patients in the manner if you had to stick some of your nurses in the pharmacy for three months?
Currently, we do have a potential of two more admissions coming in. But we also are kind of in a standstill. We're back up to what we were last year. But we also have that HVAC that's kind of looming over our heads that. So we have to keep our unit six, which is eight beds, four rooms, open. So when we transfer our secure unit, we can transfer that whole unit over there to that unit. The rest of my rooms are really filling up right now as it is. So potential of about two more people coming in would probably put me at about my max of the general population. Nurse wise. I don't think it would have, you know, if we had to use more of the nurses, there might be some clinic nurses that might be able to come in and help fill in too. I don't know what their hours are over there. But really for our nurses right now, it would be their willingness to be able to go up beyond their actual scheduled hours.
I would just like to say one thing. I think that nursing has enough on their plate. Without having to go into the pharmacy to count pills.
This looks to me like, kind of like a mini.
I just feel that that's, that's not, I think it goes.
So if, if we're not going to tell everybody in the manner, go home or move somewhere else, then this looks like a major disaster. Just waiting to have them, it's probably a big.
If you traction, so I just think.
I, I would not want to say yes to these terms unless I knew the rate was fixed. How, how can we do this? I don't, I input this, this should not wait another month. So what's the mechanism for following up?
My suggestion would be that we make a motion to purchase this machine and let finance committee work on the best terms for either.
Will they let us?
The best terms for that purchase.
Yeah, they'll have, right now, when they.
If they're not going to start building it, unless.
Well, I would, I would like the opportunity for us to discuss with our local bank to see if we can get better terms in terms of financing. So if the board approves purchasing the machine and working out the best finance terms that we could find, whether that be local or with the manufacturer, I think that would be.
Sure.
A big motion.
I guess five questions on the mechanism. So if we, I don't want to say yes to this. I also don't think it's going to be another part. Since this machine is kind of based away under memory, we would not want for our nurses.
Was Randy, what's your suggestion?
Well, I, I think we get the best proxy from the company, whether it's rates or purchase. To what interest rate it is, goes to the local banks like we did on the radiology renovation.
I do have, I do have one lingering question in our public office training slide deck. There was one slide I wish that we could turn down. I would like to have the reference. It, I think it said that we have a limitation on what we borrow. Is, is I understood it, it's one times a month. So. I, I do remember the slide. And to pick up on this. So that would be a question for the public office.
Yeah, can we ask? Allison, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the limitation on borrowing is not beyond the, the cash of the assets of the organization. So basically you would look at your budget and you can't budget to spend more than your total revenue. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, and I'm not an accountant. So if I'm not using correct accounting terms, forgive me.
So I'm just referencing, remembering the slide deck. And I remember distinctly it said we had a borrowing limit. That was one times, I took it to mean the mill levy.
No, you're not limited to the mill levy.
Okay, but I heard you say we get to that one time the cash. Or is it one time on revenue? Because those are two different.
Yeah, you, you cannot, you cannot sign up to spend more money than you are budgeted to receive.
But the only money that we receive is the mill levy.
No.
It's our revenue. One times revenue that we're budgeted to receive. Okay. So I don't know how much debt we have because we don't have a balance sheet available.
But, but you, you can, you can borrow against your existing cash. The idea is that you, the idea is you cannot sign up to spend more than you either have or going, or are going to have.
Right. And at this point, I don't know how much debt we have. I hope we don't have more debt.
Yeah, sorry, that's not my area.
We shouldn't have a problem here. Thank you.
Yes.
It sounds like we have long term debt, 1.9 million. So if we net that against our cash, Jennifer, we have, we're ahead of that about 5 million. So this would take up about 10% of our borrowing capacity. But I think we've already agreed to borrow against the CT X-ray project completed.
So thank, and you're, you're confusing the numbers. We have, if, if Randy's right and we have 1.9 million in long term debt.
Yes, we, we took it's two months.
If, when you're looking at the, the numbers you're talking about, you're talking about monthly. If, when you're looking at the, the numbers you're talking about, you're talking about monthly. You have to look at your long term debt versus your yearly income, which is $26 million. So if we have a yearly income of $26 million and debt of $1.9 million, our ratio is pretty low.
Right, right.
So we're plenty within.
I think we're perfect.
Am I right?
This shouldn't, we should have plenty room. I, I could touch base with Allison, but we're for sure have 5 million cash debt at this point. So whether it's the 5 million that's a limit or a big number, we would only be using 10% of our capacity. So I don't think this, I think this is a pretty easy choice. As long as we're aware of the terms of the debt and if we can repay early. And my concern is, is there any mechanism where we can, if we wanted to? It is contingent upon getting the answers to those questions. And we can, is, is it my understanding this machine was supportive of the budget?
Yes.
In the capital budget, so what's the machine or you approved when the budget was set?
I, we have to come back and approve those big purchases. I, I believe, for people that know better, correct me. I, but this is what I see the solution as, is we go ahead and vote to approve it contingent on.
Not to exceed, as we did with the X-ray product. We worked with the finance committee. If we're approved it, not to exceed this amount and not to go above this interest rate.
I, I would sort of, that's not exactly what I was going to say. I was going to say we vote to approve it and give the finance and together with Randy. But I want that done to, I would suggest that we recommend that they do that together. Decide on the.
What's the best way to do it?
Yeah. But so we will need a motion for that. Allison, is that work law legal wise?
Can you repeat what you said? Sorry.
That, that we go ahead and vote to approve this purchase, but that Randy and the finance committee work together to get the best terms.
As, as far as interest rate and payback terms? Yeah, that's fine. You, you would authorize the total expenditure not to include the interest? Or may, what I would suggest is maybe an interest rate not to exceed is probably a good way to frame the motion.
So somebody will need to make that motion.
Question real quick. So this would be worked out in finance.
No, we'd do it. I think they.
We'd probably do it for.
A sooner finance committee.
Could you check? We didn't have a question. We got a 320 days to go there.
So I make a motion that we purchase the Parda 320 bundle that you recommend doing, station Joy. The Parda 320.
Pardon 320.
Okay. So I make a motion that we purchase the Parda 320 for a cost not to exceed terms to be worked out by the finance committee to determine the best course of action for financing.
For discussion?
Yes. I'm a little bit confused. You're not wanting to buy it out, right then?
So when I said, the motion was for terms to be determined by the finance committee. So the finance committee will look at the lease rates being proposed by the manufacturer and the purchase outright versus the purchase outright and borrowing from a local bank. Yeah. So will the term, what the best course of action?
Their bank.
Yep. Is that fair?
Leaving it up to the finance committee to decide where they're basically buying it out and borrowing the money for these.
Who's Randy?
With Randy, yes, the finance committee and the CEO.
CEO.
Jointly determined. Is that?
As I understand this.
Are you comfortable with that?
This, I, I am. I'm just trying to get that problem to work aside. As I understand this agreement, I don't think we see this. Purchase. This is a purchase, right?
That price is for purchase. The other quote for financing.
And so since they can tell us the total finance balance, it's probably suggesting we fix it. And so it's just really the finance committee will just figure out what's that fixed rate? If we want to pay it off early, can we? But otherwise, as I understand, most of you. Well, it's, it's obvious, 60 month agreement for 9,399. It takes 6,000, 60 times nine and come up with a total purchase price.
You might be able to work with our GP, be able to get the price scored. He's done a great job.
I know with other hospitals, only thing, other thing that other hospitals closing, is there any new used equipment available?
There are. You take the risk of, don't have problems. But I see there's 22 hospitals that are.
You'd buy somebody else if you saw it.
It might be, it might not be. But you gotta have to check more. And if you want to spin in our space, we have a space.
You have the.
This is capital, so you put it on cost.
You have any more discussion?
I just think the buy used equipment, medical equipment, you're taking a risk.
Yeah. Especially this. It's not like a hell of a bed.
Yeah.
Lawsuit, made a mistake and everybody makes mistakes.
Dr. Remmer, are you just, are you listening or do you have something you want to say?
Oh, I'm, I'm just listening. I, I would give you a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, it sounds like most of this is manner. I don't know how that comes in the cost report. Half of your patients are private paid to raise rates. And say you just cover, you know, part of this. Financing, you know, you only get to write off the Medicare portion of your patient population. I think it's only going to be about 60%. I think if that interest you write off, Randy, is that a threat at all?
Is that?
Say if you have. Say, if you have 40% private patients, 60% Medicare, if you want to write off that interest on a cost report, you can only write off 60%. Anyway, just factors. And I was trying to hear.
The, the main mechanism I concern with is, I think it's a fixed rate. Right now, we're, I think Jennifer said we're earning 5% or so money market, which is good. And probably is a couple of percentage, 40% lower than this. So as long as we can earn 5%, then we're really probably paying 2% interest, which is next to nothing. So I'm very happy to do that. I think everybody expects at some point in the near future, the Fed's gonna push rates down on our money market. And when we're back earning 1% on our money market, if we're paying 6 or 7 a year, and if we have a couple of good months, or we increase our banking.
Yeah.
Then it would make a lot of sense to say, you know what, let's pay that off and save 75,000. And I just want to make sure we're not trapping ourselves into a loan agreement that will cost. So that's really a little detail I would like to iron out.
So are we ready to vote? So everybody in favor of purchasing?
My motion is to purchase the part of 320 bundle for a cost not to exceed $467,287.68 with finance terms to be worked out by the finance committee and the CEO.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, motion is passed. Okay, so we got the packaging sheet taken care of. Bylaws. Karen, was that you?
Yeah, so I asked that this be added to the agenda just because of, we've talked in small groups. And I just wanted to be talked about by all of us. I think it's the consensus that our bylaws needs for. And that there are some changes that a lot of us are looking to make. So I ask that it be added to the agenda just so that all of us, maybe the chair can issue a directive for all of us to take a look at the bylaws and bring forward for discussion, any suggested changes at the next meeting. What I would personally like is that we work together as a board to make all these changes to our bylaws, but we do it slowly and deliberately with a lot of discussion between all of us and a lot of input from Allison as our legal counsel. That's just my request to the board, that we, we do it slowly, deliberately, together and correctly.
And I talked with you guys when she gave me the laptop. So we have a SharePoint server. And she said she can convert bylaws from PDF to Word. So my plan is to ask her to do that. And once I have it in Word, I'm going to turn on track changes. And that's just the most easy to understand format. And so my plan for next meeting, if I could get that, is I'll be prepared on my computer or somebody's computer. And just, and we can just kind of start and then we can talk. And have sort of a collaborative session. And then we can see the changes as we go. It will be very clear what changes we're making, and then it'll be very easy for Allison to. So we could, I can kind of have proposed changes and then.
To create a working document that we all can see.
Yeah, and then it will show us all the changes. And once we go through it and we've all looked at it, put in our input, and then we can send that outside with you.
So my, so my question on that is, how much time do we want to dedicate to that at a meeting? I, I think that's the way to do it, is either set a 15-minute time or 30-minute time and we'll just keep working through it until we've got it done and each change.
I will agree with that, we could hit with nine changes all in one time.
Right, that's.
So how many changes?
Yeah.
Three. Three total changes.
Two. So just start at the beginning of the bylaws and work through the first.
And then kind of notify. Change that way we know if we're. Yeah, so, I mean, you can see in those documents what people are doing, just to get more clarification. I was through today, I want you guys to see kind of what I was working on.
Okay, my, my thought on that is it may get unmanageable if you have sheer documentation. So I was thinking about just being, that nobody changes unless we're all here.
Okay, I see.
And so, and it's just one single document, nobody changes it unless we're all looking at it. And we kind of go, and I can have the proposed changes.
Would that be like in a board training session, you do that in, or what kind of capacity do we do that? Do that, that's the question. Okay.
Uh, might I add, I, I drafted the bylaws, I've edited them over the years that I've been serving and I have it in Word because I'm the one who edited it. So I'm happy to do that. Happy to follow your lead on how you want to handle it. My suggestion from having done a lot of group editing is to create a list of bullets and then give the concept to me and then I can draft it. I think that, I've had good luck with that. So the other suggestion I would have is you could do it, as you said, throughout several board meetings or you could have a workshop, that the purpose of it is to work on the bylaws. I, I had one more comment if I could. As to your question on the financing, I found the statute, it's Wyoming statute 1612407. And there's a limitation on appropriations. So you cannot make an appropriation in your budget of any fund in excess of the estimated expendable revenue and reserve for the budget year. So that's more eloquent than how I put it, but hopefully that gives you guidance.
Thank you, Allison.
Yep.
And, yeah, another thing I wanted to mention to the board too, for the newer members is that Allison, keep Allison in the loop too on what we're trying to do. Because I know Allison is a lot like me and I, I don't like to be blindsided by things. I like to know and be prepared for things in advance and I know Allison does too. So if there's, you know, bylaws, changes that we're thinking about and stuff, if we give Allison a heads up, that's. Allison, can I speak for you when I say that's helpful to you?
Yeah, sorry, I went to get a glass of water, absolutely.
Thank you. So question is, do we want to just, what would you guys rather, would you prefer either do it as spending a day working on it, or would you spread for spending some time working on it in the meetings?
What I was proposing is, I'll just go ahead and address the common issues that we've done. And just as proposed change, so we don't have to do that. And then you, then we all can just react to the proposed change. And it will be probably less. If we just said, Allison, your proposed changes, rather than her, have it read through.
And so if some of the rest of us want to also suggest a change that maybe isn't yours, you want us to like bring that to you and you work on it?
And my, my proposal is just start at the very beginning of the bylaws, 101. And just work through it from the top of the line.
Yeah. But I mean, you might have an idea for one and someone else has an idea for the next one, so.
And we can just.
Yeah.
And we'll just take it paragraph by paragraph. I understand the document pretty well and have it all. We can just try and see how those.
Okay, so I think it would be nice, and maybe I'm still not understanding. Nice to have a motion for what? For maybe that we do Article 1 and Article 2 for next meeting?
Uh, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of.
That's too much? Okay.
Yeah.
So, so somebody, somebody keep talking, somebody have a better idea.
My motion would be, I'll propose a document. Let's do our changes as we can, starting at the top of the document or detail. And then we can all react to it and see if we can reach a.
So would that be the whole document?
Well, it would just, I would just, so technically my, my, your bylaws, no, so I'm just just going to start here, don't mind me, and I'm just going to work down. And wherever I think we should have our first two potential changes, I'll just add it and track changes. And it'll be on the screen and we can all see it. And then we can all discuss it.
So we'll, you, basically, we will do this all.
Yeah.
At, in our.
I'm going to say this does not take a motion. This is just, you know, where we're going to have a motion is in the changes, we're not on changes. Except the two changes, I guess we're just wanting to get it to each other.
Yeah, okay, okay, so a long discussion for an attitude, but it's a good discussion, I'm not complaining. Okay. Anything else on bylaws? It seems like there was two things we wanted to talk about. We could have.
The other thing that I wanted to chat about was, the last two meetings started at 5:00 and our bylaws specifically stayed starting at 5:30. So in the spirit that we've all been doing of, of trying to follow our bylaws, I would suggest that we return the meeting to 5:30 as specified in our bylaws. And, you know, if we wanted to meet earlier as a work group, we can do that. But the actual meeting should start at 5:30, that's what our bylaws say.
I was board training, Jennifer.
Yeah, and we can do that, that's fine, but I'm, I was just bringing it up as a.
And I will agree.
As a person who waited till the last meeting.
I think this gives the public also more opportunity to be available to come to the meeting if they so choose.
Yeah, okay. Okay, on to advertising.
Um, I wanted to, I asked this to be added because of the thing that was brought up by Bob Bonner in the last meeting about the cancellation of the contract for advertising with the newsletter journal. And I would, do you have any update on that, or is that something that we can?
I sent an email to Mary and told her she would be, she says she would be here in July and I entertain. And I would be.
Oh, okay. So I guess I don't understand.
Oh, it's Mary's.
She's one of the newsletter journals, editors, I think, or.
So is the contract with the newsletter journal still canceled?
I think, I think the question is about why we ended it.
Well, yes, and I, I guess I bring it up to have the board's reaction to that because I think that we are, I think that we are a public entity and it was said by Randy that part of the reason for canceling it is because people don't read newspapers anymore. But I think in this community, I think newspaper advertising is still important and people still do read it. And I am of the opinion that the more information that we can get out to the public and in light of this current situation where we seem to have a communication deficit, it wouldn't, I just feel like it wouldn't behoove us to cut back on our communications with the public. I would actually like to see a lot more communication with the public about things that are going on in the hospital. I, Anne and I, I joke that we might be the only two people in Weston County who aren't on Facebook, but we're not on Facebook. So when, if we don't see the newspaper and we don't get, like, it's important to still have old school advertising here. And I realize what, what our consultant said about social media and stuff, but I, I just would like the board's input to see if I'm the only person that feels that way. But I, I think it's important for this community to have.
I think it's important that it expands, I mean, did you need the social media part?
I don't disagree that it needs to be different, but I think that we just need to do as much as we can as an organization to keep the public informed and I think newspaper here is still a part of that.
Denise is trying to say something.
Yeah.
So one, I didn't realize we were under contract over here.
I didn't see it, I've not seen a contract.
We don't have any contracts, but it might have been a verbal one, but just, if I would have known that and Bob didn't say that in any of the emails previously, then I would have honored the contract. And I do think it's very important to put it in the newsprint. So I've been putting some ads in there and I tried advertising both county newspapers. But I would love any inputs you guys would like to say in any direction that you have.
I just, I asked that it be added because I think that, I just wanted to hear the whole board's input on it, not just.
Yeah, I never seen the contract or, I think it was the.
Okay, so we're just going to go down the road, because everybody has, so Nathan, you start, then we'll go to Ted.
So, so from memory, I think it was Bob that brought the issue to light that on an annual basis, we're paying each and each consulting $40,000 for something the newsletter journal was doing in 5 days. Since we just approved a new, very expensive machine, I would just ask everybody to think, is H&amp;H doing something eight times better than what the newsletter journal was doing? I doubt it. Maybe it's some better, but I doubt it eight times. And so I think we should honor our commitments. And I think it would be a good way to save $35,000 to put towards the new machine.
I think you make good points. I think also H&amp;H made good points that maybe what they were, were doing was not.
They were never, they were never of the, of all time. They were more of a training process for Denise, so that she can be important, I don't think they have faces.
That was a one-time fee, correct? That order you're talking about, that was a one-time fee, right, Randy?
Yeah, that's, maybe the, working with newsletter journal, that's what people would like to do. My, no problem with that is that, I think, as I remember, H&amp;H suggested that maybe the upgrading was timely. Based, I don't know what they were advertising on Facebook. Uh, that, you know, that we need to work with somebody so that they are working with us.
The only clarification I have is I said newsletter journal, but I think the Weston County Gazette is.
I will agree with you, I think that's, they're part of the county.
Yeah, I say newspaper, I don't think we can, so.
Yeah, I actually think that we should be definitely using both the newsletter journal and the West, Westin County Gazette and up the newsletter, you know, both covering the whole county. I think newspaper is a very important part of it as well, definitely should be honored in that contract and, and stay one, staying with it.
I agree, but I would like a good working relationship with both people.
Right, yes.
I'd like to be able to meet with them and have a good working relationship instead of.
An adversary.
An adversary, because it does not want to be good for that.
It doesn't do the county good, it doesn't do the.
Both chambers need to be involved together.
They have to work together. What we want to see advertised is a benefit, there were, there's a benefit basis that we deserve.
Well, Ted, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to correct myself. I believe I said contract, I heard contract several times, we don't have contracts. Bob said contract.
You haven't seen any paperwork or anything on that?
I believe I remember seeing something in print that Bob mentioned it was an agreement, Judd Dawson.
That's, I can remember.
I think the issue is that, I don't think it's image we want to not belong to our office.
I agree, but I, you know, I, I did make a contract.
So the motion I'd like to make is, let's resume. So, so the motion I'd like to make is, let's resume.
Oh, I mean, sorry, that's, I mean, that was a five thousand dollar, um, that's not our motion to make, is it? So that's not something that we're gonna vote on anyway, I mean, that's, you know, that's ultimately CEO's decision, so. Um, we're just talking about getting advice on what we all believe and which relationship we give to the media, more so than us voting on something, that's, that's not our. Um, but I, I, like I said, I, I mentioned to Bob at that meeting, I said, why can't we, I'd like to move forward with you. You don't have to put any, anything glowing about us, that's not what we're asking. I think what we're, all we're asking is that, you know, there's communication back and forth, if you have clarification, clarifying questions, ask us. And that's all I was alluding to when I, when I mentioned at the last board meeting and, and so on and so forth, but I, like I said, I think the Gazette's a big piece of this, too, I'm always gonna argue for that, this, um, and they do report um, on it as well, um, so, so I would say, like, how do we balance that? And I do like what H and H did, I mean, you, you, you've noticed when they came in, the me, social media and, and like what they mentioned, that social media is a big part of where, where people's eyes are today. Um, and I don't know what the newsletter journey was, was doing, I don't know how much, what were we paying, what was, what were we getting out of five K?
Three, about three thousand.
So, so it's a hundred dollars a week?
Okay.
And they do an ad on one, I'm not real sure everything, I, I do have an email from Bob that I can go back and, and look at it, um.
What did that all entail, because that's what you're alluding to, right, Terry?
So there is an, there is an ad almost every single week for, um, it's mostly staffing stuff.
Okay.
But Denise does a lot of different ads about, uh, versus week and stuff like that. And I think that's important, I think stuff like, you know, we now do carotid ultrasounds and whatever we do. You know, I think it's important for people to know about things like that, so I think we can make it better.
I just wanted to know what they, what they were actually doing on that.
So they were doing some ads and she went on and she could, she could have them go on at a certain time. And there's things that I could do, it's just that I'm a little spread thin sometimes.
I get it.
And so I just, you know, but there are a lot of different avenues out there that I would love to talk with you guys about, different things that we could do to help get information out to the public, including, um, email newsletters, some things that there's, there's quite a few different ideas out there, and I would really like to do a lot more online.
I'm not opposed to that, open that back up, I just, I just, like I said, I didn't, I didn't, I'm just asking what we're getting at that anyway. I'm not saying we weren't getting any national help, so. That's a look.
Well, I, I think the point, I would just, frankly, is I think Bob's core objection was one of fairness. That Judd, our former CEO, had made an agreement with that.
Yeah.
To do the full twelve months at a hundred dollars a week.
Right.
And I think his core objection is just one of fairness and pride. Because why don't we go ahead and just finish that out like we said we would, and then we can reconsider.
Does that expire or something?
And he never, Bob, I emailed Bob back and forth, and he did not tell me that there was, that there was a time, there was a contract until he put it in his print in his.
First off, a lot of contracts, I mean, we took Denise and I two months to cover all the property insurance.
Yeah, no, I'm all for it, I mean, according, according to media, so that, I, that's where I'm at with this, yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I just, I'm just trying to get more information.
So since we've been off of it for a couple months, or for a couple, be, month or so, are you guys okay if he wants another year to start over?
I would like, like, look at both papers, see what it's.
So they do some online things with the Gazette, so this is just online, the hundred dollars a week. So, we do additional ads in print with both newspapers. And there is a difference in cost between the both of the newspapers as well. And we also, while we're on this subject of marketing, we also do have weekly ads in the radio. And we do advertise with all of that, too. And there is a radio station option that we advertise with.
So.
Where we need to go.
Well, I'm gonna ask, Nick, you said something, this wasn't our decision, you knew the set.
Right.
Okay, so we're just giving direction to look both ways, or one way.
Yeah, just advise, or like, we.
Thank you, I, I appreciate any direction that you guys have.
This isn't our choice, for that a price, anything over ten grand, it's obviously.
Yes.
So are you good, Randy, you got the?
Yeah.
So we good to go? Um. Word communication.
Yeah, this is my last one, then you won't hear from me again. Um, I, this is sort of along the lines of the advertising, um, but I'm just, I'm just hoping that Randy and Denise, you could let the board know via emails or any other, probably email would be best, that things that are going on around the hospital, like you had let us know about the barbecue and then when we came in, we saw that you had had, um, you had had all kinds of fun stuff for the whole entire week, like ice cream socials and stuff, that I just thought we as board members, if we knew about it, then we could have had the chance to pop in and, and celebrate with the staff and.
So I was under the impression that you guys were in the facility emails when I send them out, facility Y. So I will double check and make sure that you guys are all included when I send them out, so. I will add the board in there.
That's awesome, thank you very much.
They had the spinning wheel one day, it's, it's around the clock. I know man, at four o'clock this morning, because he's on front care, well, they had so much fun, I mean, it was, I mean, it wasn't big, yes, but it's, it's just the idea that they got to spin the wheel and, and get a colder, or get a hat or something like that.
I was just really, really sad I missed the ice cream.
I will make sure that, yeah, you guys are, see that more often, right? Okay, so. I think you were the one that brought up the, the executive session minutes.
Yes, I'd like to, what I'm going to ask is the board, can the new members read your, with your permission, uh, past executive session minutes? Uh, with the understanding there's still, uh, executive session minutes, uh, pulled to that same quarter, to catch ourselves up with some of these things that happened in the past, for our understanding in the future.
Do you have an opinion on that, Allison, did you hear it?
Yeah, I heard it, um, so the executive session minutes belong to the board who heard the matter. Um, I don't think that Wyoming law has a clear answer to that. Uh, historically, I have advised boards that they're safer to, uh, review the material in a way that doesn't include reviewing the executive session minutes, uh, which is the safer route, um. I'm, I'm not sure that there's an answer I can give you that's black and white, unfortunately. Wyoming law is, um, not established in a lot of areas, some of these issues are only resolved through litigation, so.
So I'll ask a question to the board then.
I've never seen anything in session.
Well, my understanding, executive session minutes, if those that were in the executive session, have approved those minutes, then they go into sealed, whoever keeps the minutes, uh, locked or powered, they wanna keep them, but they're safe.
So it's up to the procedure of the board on how the executive session minutes are handled once they're taken. Uh, historically, I have taken the minutes for the executive session for the board, and then I have the board chair review them. Um, I do have boards that, uh, sign off on them, uh, they're not something you would review and approve necessarily in public session.
I agree.
So it's something that, if you want to discuss that further about how you'd like to handle it, that's entirely up to the board.
So if you had to require those minutes, we would.
Um. Yeah, so I do have litigation where a judge did request executive session minutes and they were provided to the judge in camera, so they didn't become a part of the record of the case, but the judge was able to consider them and rule on what she found. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Yep.
So I feel like this is something we need to think about.
I have no problem, I just was, the reason I was asking, because things have happened in the past. Exactly, maybe I'm not looking and thinking that I want to read minutes from five years ago.
Right.
But minutes from six months ago to the present, or a year ago to the present, might help some understanding.
So let's, so remind us to revisit this next, next month, where we've all thought about it and decide whether it's. Does that, does that sound like a good idea? Art, do you think, Nathan, do you think that's a good idea?
My impression of what Allison said is she didn't say no, or she didn't say yes, and so I guess it's kind of up to what, how brave we feel.
I, yeah, honestly, I can say as a board member who's been here for two years, I've never seen the executive session minutes, so we've never approved them, I don't know what's in them.
Does your board chair appreciate? Does it show them to that?
Yes, the board chair has historically approved the minutes, and again, if this board wants to have a review of them and sign off, there are some boards we work with that do have each board member sign them. That's, that's the minority, but it, but that is a path you could take if you wanted. And the other issue is that you don't want the executive session minutes floating around, so that would have to be something that's done in an appropriate manner, so.
Can I ask a question, since we're on the topic? Um, where are the minutes, are they on site or somewhere?
I, I, I keep them in my, uh, in my system, I have them archived.
Okay.
Then I have one other question, and I don't think it's the proper time. I, I advertise in the newspaper, is there a reporting process that I have to fill out saying that I spent fifty-five dollars on an ad for this? I think position.
Do you, do you know, Allison, is there a reporting process?
Usually, usually, uh, election, um, and campaign reporting is done through the clerk, I think, in the elections office locally. I know that because I ran for an election and I didn't spend any money and they contacted me and asked me where my report was, because I didn't file one, because I didn't spend any money, but they still would like a report, so.
You think that's true, you're a hospital board? Yes, it's, it's true.
Yes. Mine was for the, um, mine was for the, uh, the college, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So anybody could put it on there, go talk to Becky. Okay, anything, so the next one, um, is H and H letter. So, uh, does anybody, am I the only one that has this? No, no, I think the letter we got, email, right? But probably the whole board.
I got a fake copy tonight.
You got it. That is it, this? No, it's, that's a different letter.
I don't know, look at the page, page, okay?
You are correct, that's a different one.
All right, I got a letter.
So who has the best voice, like, I feel like me reading this, I don't think anybody will be able to hear.
Mary has the best voice. All right, um, H and H Leadership Services, um, on behalf of H and H Leadership Solutions, I would like to express our sincere appreciation of the opportunity to collaborate with the board, providers, leaders, and staff of Weston County Health Services. It has been a privilege to work alongside each such dedicated individuals who are committed to providing quality health care to your community. After careful consideration, H and H Leadership Solutions has made the decision to complete our contractual arrangements and not pursue further agreements with WCHS. H and H Leadership Solutions is committed to fulfilling our remaining contract obligations. This includes completing the CHRO placement, providing interim CHRO and COO through support through the contractual timeline. As of the date of this letter, here's an update on the status of our current agreements. The current Chief Human Resources Officer search is underway. Currently, three active candidates remain of four, one dropped out Friday following her watching the board meeting video. The interim CHRO's contract ends on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. The interim COO has nine days remaining within the agreement, ending on May twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. This is a planned and approved absence from Weston County Health Services between May seventh through fourteenth. The operational assessment will be completed with a recommendation summary to be sent to Randy Ledoura later this week. Additionally, we are issuing notice of cancellation for the social media contract effective at the end of this month. This will allow for the representation of celebrations of hospital nurses and EMS weeks this month. Please consider this letter as formal notification of the termination of the social media contract. Moving forward, H and H Leadership Solutions will not be entering into any further agreements with Weston County Health Services beyond our existing commitments. However, we would like to offer limited advisory services to WCHS in identifying individuals or agencies who can address the challenges WCHS is facing. This includes assistance in identifying physician and leadership placement firms connecting WCHS with reputable board education agencies and providing recommendations for IT vendor services. We believe that this advisory support will aid WCHS in navigating, navigating their current circumstances and moves the organization towards a stable future. Thank you once again for the opportunity to collaborate with WCHS. If you have any questions or require further assistance, please do not hesitate to reach out. Signed, Charles Hall, Principal H and H Leadership, and Stephen Hart, Principal H and H Leadership. So that is the letter, Madam Chair, I have a question. If the letter says they don't want to continue with anything with us, what is this proposal that we got today?
Yeah, I should love to be, they're actually, uh, uh, actually, during the hiring, they recommend this person. Uh, that's what, the camp, the education and everything, now, they're not making any money off that, there's, they're more of a, representing this person to the board, uh, with this is, and then, uh, leadership development, so. And that's all, so.
So, somebody told me, Randy, that, um, H and H had a advertisement up on their website. Is this what they were advertising?
Perhaps, yes.
And so, uh, if we don't, with them, if we don't agree to that, how does that work? If then you can already tap it up, the advertisement up?
I mean, uh, I mean, if you don't agree, but then you just don't, the, the one that's gonna be, that's the doing it over certain ones. But as Allison agreed and the board agreed, we need that education, not only for camp, for the organization from a compliance standpoint, and leadership development.
So this person is not with H and H, correct?
No, correct.
Okay, and do we have more information somewhere on this, who this person is that they're recommending?
Yeah, and, uh.
On the, okay.
Oh, that is a CV. That is a CV.
So, yeah, that's, can we just take it under advisement for right now? So. So, okay. So didn't have this, they didn't have this on the agenda, right?
Under privacy.
Oh, under privacy.
H and H has advertised, two different advertisements for job offerings.
What's the other one that you've seen?
The other one they have is Chief Human Resource Officer in Newcastle for H and H Leadership.
Yeah, we know about that one. I didn't know about this one.
No.
Can I ask you a question? Do you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, it's kind of like you're in a can, but I can hear you.
Of the three remaining HR manager candidates, are you familiar with their resumes? Do they show HIPAA compliance as part of what they're experienced in doing?
If I may, Pam wouldn't be able to speak to that. Pam wouldn't be able to speak to that as I haven't provided a resumes to anybody.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Is there anything else we need to talk about? I've got everything on this list, except for this CEO spring meeting, the May eighteenth, which is in two days.
Hurry.
So if anyone wants to go, we better, Denise? I'd also like to let everybody know that tomorrow, Friday, from four to six, we are having a retirement party for Mike Carpenter in the cafeteria. So we would all love for you to, to join us for. For six, or? For six, yes. Okay, anything else? Can we have a motion to move into executive session?
Madam Chair, we're taking a break.
Oh, please, yes, do, yes. Usually what we do is we move into executive session. Okay, before, because either one's good. Is that, I mean, do we have a motion?
I, I make a motion we move into.
Okay, I think a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Board, board, can we add to the motion for the reasons set forth on the agenda?
You want us to state the stability of the law?
Yeah. Right there.
Yeah. We're going in executive session sixteen-four, four oh five A. I believe that's mine. Whether it will be considered or received information classified as a confidential bylaw and can consider provided.
Okay, so thank you guys for having me.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.